Now, last year this time we were in Palape. This year, Khaboroni, it is your turn. We are live on Facebook, so we need to show them what time it is. If you are tuned in and logging in online, please use the hashtag #Vision2036. I also just want to highlight something very important in terms of the national transformational strategy, Remolomo if you can allow me. This strategy is taking us to 2030 and it's looking at eight strategic sectors. And I'm very excited to be one of the sectors. In fact, His Excellency President Masisi was addressing us yesterday. Sports and creative industries, we've done remarkably well. I mean, can we give a round of applause to Lizi Le Tebo Ho? That's the sports and creative industries that we need to really zone in on. And that's the industry that I'm a practitioner in. Other sectors which will propel us to Vision 2036 and get into a high-income nation also include mining, tourism, transport and logistics, trade, financial real estate and business services, manufacturing. Notice how I moved a bit fast because the spotlight today is on agriculture. So, we are here to explore and find out what opportunities are available in the agriculture space. Of course, we will have a broad discussion, a panel discussion a bit later on, a Q&amp;A where you can also chip in and ask questions. I'll also let you know how you can contribute meaningfully towards the development of NDP12, which is ongoing. Without further ado, let me move the program along to call onto the stage and the podium the Dean at Buwan, that's Botswana University of Agriculture and Natural Resources, Faculty of Animal and Veterinary Sciences, Professor Utusite Madibela, to give us welcome remarks. Let us welcome him on stage with a huge round of applause for those welcome remarks. Thank you. Now, this is a very, very important occasion. And before I go any further, I would like us to open up the program with prayer, as is the norm of Botswana. I would like a volunteer to come and pray for us as we open up this program. Good morning to you once again. I am the program director, Kividua Tsapang Mutsisi. That volunteer, please, or I can handpick, I don't mind. Aro Mosha Pingala Kofi, as she makes her way to the stage to bless this very important occasion. It is the second time we are convening and we are commemorating Vision 2036, commemoration month of August.
Beto, me kitesese sivakase kudumisee Bhachana, aruwe hemudimor rapelim. Mo inenjara rale jamorale jamoawishepo, modimorona raaleboha orabunsetabo yaletsasi ramaseedi. Modimorona banguehava ebona eskaworakachabone, kelemoja alibone basaduwaruna baholu. Ba elonkorre basesee bahukopola helaka dikaka mio modimoraka. Modimoraka risila hanorisili entiroenyetona, yatebelo pele, yatoro, yakatero. Modimoraka ke lopa moowishepo, ore etelepele rokonakatekamola hasanlarona. Ke lopa loko namoletsasi lahu npeyenu, korre amoowishepo orene. Amoowishepo ore etelepele kanzera kela, kia kulemoja ramaseedi. Amen.
Thank you Ma. Let's give a round of applause for that powerful prayer. We are now blessed, so we can begin with the program. If you can allow me, before I call on the speaker to give us welcome remarks, just to give us a little bit of background, Vision 2036 aims to achieve or ensure that we reach a point of achieving prosperity for all. And this will be achieved through three pillars. The number one being the ultimate pillar, the Sustainable Economic Development pillar. And there's two pillars that are labeled enablers. And these are human and social development, sustainable environment, as well as governance, peace and security. Botswana Vision 2036 also aligns with many other strategies as well. It embraces mindset change, reset and reclaim agenda, cabinet strategy thrusts and national policies and strategies. Regionally, it aligns with Africa Agenda 2063. And internationally, the popular SDGs, which are the Sustainable Development Goals, as well as the Paris Agreement on Climate Change agreed in December 2015. The theme for this year is Tebelo Pele, Year 2036. Lenna Mpaalela Motin. That is, Vision 2036, Count Me In. So by being here with us this morning, you are saying, count me in. So a round of applause for yourselves, please. Now, last year this time, we were in Palape. This year, Khaboroni, it is your turn. We are live on Facebook, so we need to show them what time it is. If you are tuned in and logging in online, please use the hashtag #Vision2036. I also just want to highlight something very important in terms of the National Transformational Strategy, Remolomo if you can allow me. This strategy is taking us to 2030 and it's looking at eight strategic sectors. And I'm very excited to be one of the sectors. In fact, His Excellency President Masisi was addressing us yesterday. Sports and creative industries, we've done remarkably well. I mean, can we give a round of applause to Lizi Le Tebo Ho? That's the sports and creative industries that we need to really zone in on. And that's the industry that I'm a practitioner in. Other sectors which will propel us to Vision 2036 and get into a high-income nation also include mining, tourism, transport and logistics, trade, financial real estate and business services, manufacturing. Notice how I moved a bit fast because the spotlight today is on agriculture. So, we are here to explore and find out what opportunities are available in the agriculture space. Of course, we will have a broad discussion, a panel discussion a bit later on, a Q&amp;A where you can also chip in and ask questions. I'll also let you know how you can contribute meaningfully towards the development of NDP12, which is ongoing. Without further ado, let me move the program along to call onto the stage and the podium the Dean at Buwan, that's Botswana University of Agriculture and Natural Resources, Faculty of Animal and Veterinary Sciences, Professor Utusite Madibela, to give us welcome remarks. Let us welcome him on stage with a huge round of applause for those welcome remarks. Thank you.
Can I have your computer? Good morning everybody. My task is to welcome you, but I've also prepared something which I hope will be of inspiration, if not thought-provoking, but hopefully not to offend anybody.
Thank you ma. Let's give a round of applause for that powerful prayer. We are now blessed. So we can begin with the program. If you can allow me. Before I call on the speaker to give us welcome remarks. Just to give us a little bit of background, Vision 2036 aims to achieve or ensure that we reach a point of achieving prosperity for all. And this will be achieved through three pillars. The number one being the ultimate pillar, the Sustainable Economic Development pillar. And there's two pillars that are labeled enablers. And these are human and social development, sustainable environment, as well as governance, peace, and security. Botswana Vision 2036 also aligns with many other strategies as well. It embraces mindset change, reset and reclaim agenda, cabinet strategy thrusts, and national policies and strategies. Regionally, it aligns with Africa Agenda 2063. And internationally, the popular SDGs, which are the Sustainable Development Goals, as well as the Paris Agreement on Climate Change agreed in December 2015. The theme for this year is Tebelo Pele, Year 2036. Lenna, Mpaalela, Motiin. That is, Vision 2036, Count Me In. So by being here with us this morning, you are saying, count me in. So a round of applause for yourselves, please. Now, last year this time, we were in Palape. This year, Kaboroni, it is your turn. We are live on Facebook, so we need to show them what time it is. If you are tuned in and logging in online, please use the hashtag #Vision2036. I also just want to highlight something very important in terms of the National Transformational Strategy. Remolomo, if you can allow me. This strategy is taking us to 2030. And it's looking at eight strategic sectors. And I'm very excited to be one of the sectors. In fact, His Excellency President Masisi was addressing us yesterday. Sports and creative industries, we've done remarkably well. I mean, can we give a round of applause to Liti Le Tebo Ho? That's the sports and creative industries that we need to really zone in on. And that's the industry that I'm a practitioner in. Other sectors which will propel us to Vision 2036 and get into a high-income nation also include mining, tourism, transport and logistics, trade, financial real estate and business services, manufacturing. Notice how I moved a bit fast because the spotlight today is on agriculture. So, we are here to explore and find out what opportunities are available in the agriculture space. Of course, we will have a broad discussion, a panel discussion a bit later on. A Q&amp;A where you can also chip in and ask questions. I'll also let you know how you can contribute meaningfully towards the development of NDP 12, which is ongoing. Without further ado, let me move the program along to call onto the stage and the podium the Dean at Buwan, that's Botswana University of Agriculture and Natural Resources, Faculty of Animal and Veterinary Sciences, Professor Utusite Madibela, to give us welcome remarks. Let us welcome him on stage with a huge round of applause for those welcome remarks. Thank you.
Can we have your computer? Good morning, everybody. My task is to welcome you, but I've also prepared something which I hope will be of inspiration, if not thought-provoking, but hopefully not to offend anybody. I'm excited to be here and I think this is a very exciting moment for Buwan. In the past months or years, we have been seeing Buwan trending, showing that people are now recognizing Buwan. And it looks like we have joined the big boys' club. And that's very very commendable. I would like to start with recognizing the Honorable Minister of Agriculture, Remolao. The area MP, Re Balopi, Kuta Kuta Haioha. Kosi Kenneth Karri. I would also like to recognize the Vice Chancellor of Buwan, Professor Mosipili. Commissioner General, Re Molomo. My DVCs here present and other deputy commissioner generals here present. Peerses, Deputy Peerses of Ministries who are here. Commander BDF, Commissioner Police, Commissioner Prisons or the delegates, CEOs and captains of industries. Panelists, I'd recognize you. I think we're here because of you, ladies and gentlemen. Welcome to the second Vision 2036 Public Lecture and Round Table Panel Discussion. This year, the title is implementing the National Transformation Strategy by leveraging research, science, technology, and innovation to grow the agriculture and natural resource industry, the case for Buwan. So we're zooming into Buwan. Perhaps you'll agree the reason why we are zooming into Buwan. This is because Buwan is the only land-based premier institution of higher learning in the country. I would say land-based because it is the land, is the soil that supports agriculture production in its entirety and support natural resource conservation. Buwan may look small in infrastructure, but is a giant. Its mandate is gigantic. Actually, the mandate of Buwan overlaps four ministries. Honorable Minister, ladies and gentlemen. If these ministries were to financially support Buwan according to the importance of what they expect from Buwan. Or let's say, they want to buy shares from Buwan. Buwan would be a richer organization. Let me explain. The Ministry of Agriculture benefit from Buwan through advisory, information dissemination, consultancy, farmers' education. The Ministry of Environment and Tourism benefits from Buwan through advisory, policy implementation, technology generation, and consultancy. Perhaps these two ministries account for 60% of Buwan's existence. If it were not for us to serve these two ministries, there would be no Buwan. Then the Ministry of Education Skills Development. I think some people say, why did you go there? It's just administration. For which Buwan is there to drive the Ministry Education Police, to drive knowledge-based society policy and human resource development. Then, maybe another ministry which is not obvious. I see my colleague Deputy Peerses from the Ministry. The Ministry of Communication, Knowledge, and Technology. It relies on Buwan for technology creation and innovation. Honorable Minister. Our Vice Chancellor here, the Vice Chancellor Prof. Mosipili has big dreams for Buwan. We all have big dreams for this university. And we need infrastructure development to realize these dreams. You'll remember, through its existence as a coach and now as an investor, Buwan has achieved a lot. Perhaps it does not evident, but now such achievement is becoming evident. And that's why we are here. You know, somebody realized the importance of Buwan. Ladies and gentlemen, you remember those frontline agriculturists in the 70s and 80s? The one that we used to call balimis? And by kinti, those products of Buwan. These kada were the backbone of crop production, education. Because they were going out there, carried by sickies, needed school, and teaching farmers how to farm. And they were custodians of disease control. And that's why we are at EU. It is because of the foundation that they made. Buwan is planning to reintroduce training for these people. This is because wherever you go, the conversation is on agriculture and natural resources. You turn on the radio, you see those young journalists at GAPS FM debating about agriculture, debating about natural resources. You turn on the TV, one program after the other. They're talking about agriculture in the streets, in the kombis. So what is it that is peculiar and so important about agriculture? I want to raise one critical point that we really need to take serious consideration about. This point was raised by Honorable Pegasus Ramen, Minister of Finance during the budget speech. And that point is, knowledge has value. I want to emphasize this because in the past, our government coming from a good heart, that allow Botswana to come to offices of departments and get knowledge for free. Here at Buwan, we are striving to produce knowledge that has value. However, usually, society want to get it for free. Buwan mandate is not profit-making financially. But our most important profit or asset is knowledge. So, this is for you non-governmental organization. When you come to Buwan, asking for help or contribution, don't ask for money. You don't make money. We make knowledge. But we are going to charge it for you. We have a consultancy company, Buwan Consult, which is trying to monetize knowledge. Knowledge generation at the university. The old ways of giving knowledge for free has actually set a bad precedence. Because our graduates, when they go out there, they can't find jobs. And the only thing that they have or the jobs that they can create is to sell this knowledge. But people want to get it for free. So we cannot continue as Buwan setting a bad example. Otherwise, we will not achieve sustainable development, economic development. Which is the reason why we are here, the four pillars of Vision 2036. Here, I'm thinking of three youth Buwan graduate companies who are trying to monetize this knowledge I'm talking about. Last Doc Management AJC. Farmers' Club. Murue Itute. I'm not saying this because they were my students, my former students. But because they are thriving to monetize knowledge instead of seeking employment from government. There are many more. And Buwan Alumni Database will reveal those as time goes on. And all these points to the vision. Actually, if you look at the vision pillars, it looks like Buwan was made for this vision, sustainable economic development. You cannot have development, honestly speaking, in a country like us without agriculture. Actually, at one stage, I saw this tag on a car when I was a student at UBE, at the Ministry of Agriculture. Somebody has a car, you know, those four by four, you know, initially. Our fathers used to buy those four by four. It has indicated agriculture put a plate of food three times a day. So I think that's what Buwan tag should be. And little snack in between. So agriculture is the pathway for economic development. Human and social development. I talked about teaching, educating the youth. And that's it. Sustainable environment, that one is obvious. Governance, peace, and security. If some of you have remembered the revolts in North Africa. It was all about increase in price of food, even recently in Nigeria. So basically, food dictates peace and security. So all these pillars point to Buwan. I welcome you. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much sir. Another round of applause for the Dean, Faculty of Animal Veterinary Sciences, Professor Utusite Madibela from Buwan with those welcome remarks. And I just want to highlight what you said there, knowledge has value. And we are moving towards a knowledge-based economy. So that's very, very important. And I just want to link what you said about knowledge and money. You reminded me of a quote that I love of Warren Buffett. One of the richest people in the world says, the more you learn, the more you earn. So there is a correlation. Us being in a university here is definitely in line with us trying to achieve more and get to prosperity for all. Moving along, entertainment and music connect us all. So that is what we are going to move swiftly to. But before that, just to tell you and tease about what's coming up ahead. There is a project that Buwan will be showcasing. It is Kudlen Valley, so we might have to travel a little bit to go and see the Agriculture and Natural Resources Engineering Lab. And straight after that, we'll see another demonstration right here, which will be a treated sewage water purification plant. Now, before we get to the keynote address, I saw a gentleman here who looked like he could be a poet, Kimoki. Let's welcome him with a round of applause.
Moramo Sipiri, nta kiseka khotu kala feela. Kana kweena mizi obiritembito. Kana kweena ngkudi ulala laosose. Otha reeta la tignaniwaha oso somka somka wudibera. Takanataho yalemo laano kakanahudibera. Yana giligacha ere wuankayone. Kione yisiisu. Uluansara mata ekata wuno musisane. Awakasika arola di kagoya na ya wuata. Hasi le tawala kameka lemeena. Kana rilibile wena, kujale kona rilibile wena. Ntso nseto tse timori fasela botswana. Huri hula enne rereibone. Reta ebona kama maldikula tutoa timotole disatuleho. Humpene no kia waha kola. Hare katsara koma na ora kabo na kana dialo hanata monua. Hadifitire Paulo, ya diwa kasezuti. Yadiwa. Hasi suti. Sekitere. Sepoti. De ga. Lingida la riakanetimbo. Mama. Kasi. Nava. Ki repansa. Yala. Repa. Si piri. Resoana. Basanyi. Wawabamfua. Fihtalo.[608.91]
And when the country turned fifty years old in twenty sixteen, another long-term vision was launched with the theme Achieving Prosperity for All. This is Vision Twenty Thirty-Six, built on the lessons learned from the implementation of Vision Twenty Sixteen. Through this vision, Botswana acknowledges and embraces a new era characterized not only by clear plans but deliberate efforts to deliver on those plans. It is a transformational agenda anchored on several principles, key amongst them innovation, science and technology, research and development. These principles challenge us individually and as a collective to assume a productive progressive mindset if we are to achieve a high income status by twenty thirty-six. Director Ceremonies, the theme for this year's Vision Twenty Thirty-Six Commemoration Month is Tebelopile Yami, rather Tebelopile Year Twenty Thirty-Six, Linnampalela Moti, which translates to Vision Twenty Thirty-Six: Count Me In. This theme supports, rather this theme purpose to promote inclusivity, thus challenging each one of us to play our role in shaping our destiny and the destiny of our beloved country. It is a reminder to every individual that each one of us has a role to play towards achieving our national aspirations. This year's commemoration focuses on the agricultural sector as one of the eight priority sectors in the National Development Plan Twelve. It is in recognition of the pivotal role of Buwan in this sector, particularly in the area of innovation through research, science and technology, that the university is hosting this public lecture and roundtable panel discussion today. There could not have been a better host than Buwan. This public lecture is in line with this theme. We'll address the topic implementing the national transformation strategy by leveraging on research, science, technology and innovation to grow the agricultural and natural resources sectors, the case of Buwan. This collaboration embodies the spirit of shared purpose on leveraging on the NPC's strategic role in planning and Buwan specialized knowledge in agriculture to facilitate research for practical solutions. I wish to underscore research for practical solutions to grow the sector's contribution to the growth of the economy. We all know as a country that by construct we are agriculturalists. Every household practices some form of agriculture. And yes, we can catapult our country to a high economic status through our agricultural pursuits. Director Ceremonies, the importance of agricultural sector in our economy cannot be overemphasized. The sector is the mainstay of our economy, especially in rural communities. It provides livelihood and can reduce poverty, raise incomes and improve food security mainly for our rural population. Agriculture is one of the most powerful tools for ending extreme poverty, boosting shared prosperity and potential for accelerated growth. The transformation of the agricultural sector is therefore pertinent for food security and exports. And I agree with you, Professor Madibela, that agriculture is or food security is really in essence an instrument of our national security as a country. Without it, we are vulnerable. Distinguished guests, ladies and gentlemen, agriculture as a boost to shared prosperity and potential for accelerated growth and the transformation is pertinent for our wealth, pertinent for our well-being and export-led economy that we desire for. Today's public lecture aims to showcase the potential of research and science, technology and innovation to enhance productivity, sustainability, efficiency within the agricultural and natural resources sectors. This is in line with our vision of establishing a sustainable, technology-driven, commercially viable agricultural sector through the agricultural value chains. The development and adoption of advanced agricultural techniques such as precision farming, climate-smart practices to breakthrough technologies in resource management have the power to revolutionize this sector. Furthermore, fostering an environment that supports innovation helps to unlock new opportunities for growth and development. I therefore look forward to hearing and learning about emerging innovations that can serve as models towards our transformation efforts in this sector and its linkages with other sectors of the economy. Director Ceremonies, as I conclude, I wish to implore all stakeholders to collaborate with us in this journey to develop the agricultural sector. Make it sustainable, make it fashionable. Together, we can create an ecosystem that nurtures research, supports technological development and encourages innovation. I commend the collaboration between Buwan and NPC as it brings together strategic planning and expertise to address one of the most pressing challenges as it brings to the fore opportunities in and for the sector. To Buwan and the panelists and participants, your insights and contributions will be instrumental in shaping our nation's future together, rather, our nation's future. Together, we can help unlock the potential of the sector and contribute to a prosperous nation with a resilient and sustainable economy, even at household level. Ladies and gentlemen, with these few remarks, I wish you fruitful discussions and look forward to those innovative solutions that can be adopted and adapted to our environment to make our agricultural undertakings more profitable and more enjoyable. Kala Boka Ula.
The Honorable Minister of Agriculture, Mr. Fidelis M. Molau, thank you so much. Another round of applause for him as you take your seats. He spoke about something that is very close to what we will be showcasing later on in the projects by the Buwan students in terms of research for practical solutions. Now, something very important as we move along, we're going for a break, but an important announcement, there are refreshments, we will allow the VIP to leave first. And there are also some bathrooms, the VIP, Konekaku, Tarona, others will be on the side, right out from this auditorium. Now, I've just been told that the breakfast is slightly delayed. So I believe we can carry on with the program if you can allow me. Move on to the next item and then we can go for that break shortly after. But as I mentioned, there are bathrooms in case you need to use them. Kona Leta VIP, the Ashes will assist you. That way, that is when you exit the auditorium to your left and for everybody else to the right, they will assist you with that. Now, I just need us to increase and grow the energy in the room. We've spoken quite a little bit, we've got young people outside, we are on Facebook. Kanaho MC, Wanarpetebo, can you feel it, Yebu? But for purposes of today, maybe we should keep it on brand and on theme. So when I say Botswana Vision Twenty Thirty-Six, please respond by saying Achieving Prosperity for All, okay? Can we try that? All right, Botswana Vision Twenty Thirty-Six?
Achieving Prosperity for All.
I can't hear you, we've got students outside, louder everybody, Botswana Vision Twenty Thic- Thirty-Six?
Achieving Prosperity for All.
I love that, I love that, a round of applause for yourselves one time. Some other important details include taglines like Inspiring Sustainable Growth. That's one of the hashtags and Buwan prides itself in inspiring that sustainable growth. I know the National Planning Commission also prides themselves in saying that they are planning for future Botswana. There's many other hashtags that you should use online when you interact with us and prepare that question, including National Planning Commission as a hashtag, hashtag Vision Twenty Thirty-Six, hashtag Achieving Prosperity for All, hashtag One BW, One Vision, One Plan, which speaks to a One BW, One Gov. Ultimately, what they mean is, somebody can just pick it up on behalf of somebody else. That's my interpretation of that. And the last hashtag is Yami, hashtag Yami because it is for us all. Now, ladies and gentlemen, as we move on to the next item, I think we can go into the public lecture before we get into that panel discussion. If you can allow me to welcome on stage the Vice Chancellor of Buwan, Professor Ketlatongile Mosepele. A round of applause for him as he makes his way to the podium. The stage is yours.
Thank you very, very much, Director of Ceremonies. Let me recognize the presence of the Minister of Agriculture, Honorable Molau. Let me also recognize the presence of the Commissioner General of the National Planning Commission, Raye Maloum. And allow me to rest on the protocol that has already been established. Um, Raye Maloum, last time after our press event, I promised you today I'll be wearing a suit. And here I am. But I must, I must admit, yesterday I wanted to whistle out of wearing a suit. So I innocently asked my Deputy Vice Chancellor, Finance and Administration, oh, by the way, since I'm giving a lecture and not a speech, do I really need to wear a suit? And she said, well, you see, because the minister will be there. So, Honorable Minister, because of you, I'm wearing a suit. This is probably the second time in my life that I'm giving a lecture wearing a suit. Because otherwise, I prefer to wear jeans and a shirt to, to give a lecture. But anyhow, I, consistent with the theme of today's event, I have titled my public lecture, Transforming Botswana's Agriculture and Natural Resources Sectors: Can Buwan Move the Needle? And I do not have any slides because I wanted all attention to be on me. So bear with me for those of you who are looking forward to seeing slides on the, on the screen. But anyhow, I've divided the lecture into three components, what I call the situational analysis, because I believe it's important for us to have an appreciation of the situation of agriculture and natural resources in Botswana. So that once we have that understanding, once we have that appreciation, then it's easy for us to identify where Buwan is and what Buwan needs to do moving forward. But I think first of all, allow me to reiterate something which Prof. Madibela indicated, that agriculture, I'll paraphrase what he said, that agriculture and natural resources have always played a key role in the development of civilizations. There's no question about it. Now, for those of you who are history buffs, remember Vazco Dagama? Remember Christopher Columbus? Remember Marco Polo? I'm going to ask questions because this is a public lecture, right? It's a lecture. And by the way, by the way, when I used to lecture, the people that I start asking questions first are the ones at the back, not the ones in front. So those of you who are at the back, be ready. But what do you think is common to all of these explorers? Christopher Columbus, Vazco Dagama, Bartolomeo Dias? Underpinning all of this was the search for trade routes by these explorers. And this was motivated by agriculture and natural resources. For instance, Christopher Columbus, he wanted to find a new route to India, to China, to Japan, the Spice Islands, right? And he wanted to bring back with him, if he could find those spice islands, he wanted to bring back with him rich cargoes of silk and spices. Silk and spices, natural resources and agriculture. For those of you who might not be aware, silk is part of agriculture and natural resources, right? Now, as a result of this, nations throughout history, nations have waxed and waned on their ability to attain or failure thereof food and nutrition security for their people. Um, but now, moving away from that historical perspective which I've shared with you and moving into the contemporary world, universities have taken over the role of those explorers. This is where now exploration is within universities. And therefore, we need to leverage on the transformative power of universities to drive our national development. This transformative power should be optimized to achieve SADEX Vision Twenty Fifty. This vision is premised on creating a competitive, and I'll, I'll read this, a competitive middle-to-high-income industrialized region where all citizens enjoy a sustainable economic well-being, among others. Now, in the words of Prof. Madibela, universities cannot achieve this alone. We need stakeholders to work with us. We need partners to work with us so that we can unlock the transformative power of universities in nation building. And for that reason therefore, Buwan is actively seeking partnerships and collaborations to achieve its mandate of building a future that we want, a future that is envisioned in Vision Twenty Thirty-Six. Who or what is Buwan? I think it's important for us to understand this. Buwan is a specialized university of agriculture and natural resources. And our mandate is to produce innovative graduates and technological solutions for sustainable development in agriculture and natural resources sectors, thereby inspiring sustainable growth. Now, Buwan is a young university. It was created by an act of parliament in twenty fifteen, but we started functioning as a university around twenty eighteen, twenty nineteen. So we are young, we're still growing, we're still transforming from a college into a university. But we are actively punching above our weight class. And I'll tell you why as we move along. We are passionate about executing this mandate that has been invested in us. That mandate being to contribute to making Botswana food and nutrition secure, thereby facilitating the implementation or the achievement of Vision Twenty Thirty-Six. This is who we are as a university. But I must say, I am a dreamer. Prof. Madibela, I'll keep on quoting you, I am a dreamer. And my dream about Buwan might not be based on reality, but that's what dreams are all about, isn't it? That's what dreams are all about. I dream the impossible, but I know that sometimes the impossible can become possible. It is quite possible that if perhaps Albert Einstein did not think the impossible could be possible, he might not have discovered the theory of relativity, isn't it? So this is where we are now as Buwan. Because I believe that Buwan is a national project that has potential to push Botswana from where it is to an ideal that is envisioned in Vision Twenty Thirty-Six. But then, before I get to that dream, before I get to that vision, let me backtrack a little bit and share with you so that you appreciate the situation as it is in the agriculture and natural resources space in Botswana. Now, it is a fact that Botswana is a semi-arid country, right? Now, approximately seventy percent of the country is covered by the Kalahadi Desert. Now, that automatically suggests that food production is going to be challenged, isn't it? Botswana is vulnerable to droughts. Botswana is characterized by special temporal variability in rainfall, we all know that, right? Most rains in Botswana fall from October to April, usually as localized showers or thunderstorms, we all know that. Rainfall levels usually peak between January and March, right? Now, about three-quarters of Botswana is covered by the sand feld, which is characterized by sandy soils, we all know that, right? Now, Botswana is a water-stressed country, we know that. And therefore, we get around sixty to sixty-five percent of our water supply from groundwater. Now, some of these underground water aquifers are fossil in nature without recharge. And this increases our vulnerability to water scarcity, right? And therefore, when you look at the climatic conditions, food production in Botswana is a major challenge. And this will therefore contribute to national food and nutrition insecurity. But Buwan will still come in, I'm still giving you the situation as it is so that we understand and we appreciate, so that we can appreciate the value of this national resource that is Buwan and how we can use it to achieve Vision Twenty Thirty-Six. Now, agriculture's contribution to the national economy based on Statistics Botswana is about two percent of the national GDP. Now, this is against the global average of about four percent. So there's still room for growth towards that four percent, isn't it? Now, when you look at food imports, on average, on average, food imports into Botswana were valued at around fourteen billion per annum in twenty twenty-two and twenty twenty-three. This is the situation based on data from Statistics Botswana. And cereals are the top food imports. And topmost is maize, wheat and rice. This is the situation. Now, when you look at electricity generation, electricity generation, the trend is that electricity generation is increasing over time. But we are still importing electricity. Therefore, we are not yet independent in terms of electricity generation, right? I have some interesting information here, textiles and footwear. Textiles and footwear, this is also part of agriculture and natural resources, just so that you know, okay? Now, on an annual basis, think about this, on an annual basis, imports in this category in Botswana in twenty twenty-two and twenty twenty-three amounted to two-point-four billion. You don't look shocked? Furniture, furniture, one billion per annum. Imports. So these data, this very simple data, they suggest that Botswana's imports in the agriculture and natural resources sector are valued at a minimum of seventeen-point-four billion per annum. That's quite a bit of change, isn't it? Now, this is approximately seven percent of the twenty twenty-two GDP at current prices, just in simple terms. Prof., that's why I wanted you to give me those stats yesterday. Now, let's go to employment. Now, when you look at skills, skilled occupations in agriculture and natural resources, sectors had the lowest, the lowest proportion of employed Botswana, had just under ten thousand people from a total of seven hundred thousand of the labor force. And this has remained constant over the past several years. Just over seventy-two thousand people in total, not just the skilled labor force, but in total, seventy-two thousand people were employed in the agriculture sector by quarter one of 2024. Now, here's another statistic. We're still looking at the situational analysis. Out of a total national labor force of over seven hundred and fifty thousand people, sixty-four percent of those had either only just secondary, primary, or non-formal education or had never been to school. So there's a huge skills gap in our national labor force. Let's now move on to food and nutrition security. If you look at the years between 2010 and 2019, this is based on Statistics Botswana. Average yield of sorghum, average yield of sorghum was about half a ton per hectare against a regional standard of about three tons per hectare. Maize was about zero point four tons per hectare against two tons in the region. Millet about zero point three tons against one ton in the region. Now, when we look at data on food and nutrition insecurity, now, moderate to severe food and nutrition insecurity increased by from fifty-one percent of Botswana in the 2018-2019 period to fifty-three percent in the 21-22 period. Now, moderate food and nutrition insecurity has remained relatively stable over the same period. Severe food and nutrition insecurity has increased in the same period from twenty-two percent to twenty-six percent. So this is the situation. Now, what are the key challenges based on this situation which I've shared with you? And I want to quote the words of the past immediate governor of the Bengal of Botswana, who said, "We need to move fast into the space of renewable energy and building the green economy because it could help us to build and increase the productivity of our economy, create jobs, and diversify revenue streams," end quote. So this is our philosophical framework. This is how we now start to move and push Botswana forward. For me, this is the key philosophy which resonates very, very well with who we are as a university. And therefore, what needs to be done based on the situation that I've just shared with you is we need to increase our food production. It's obvious, isn't it? Especially cereals, isn't it? Despite the untenable environment that we find ourselves in, right? Because food and nutrition security, as you rightfully indicated, Prof Madibela, these are paramount for socioeconomic growth and they underpin national development. Now, the argument is if semi-arid and arid countries, like what you find in the Middle East, if they can be independent in terms of food production, why can't we as a country? If land-challenged countries, like for instance, the Netherlands, can do it, why can't we do it in Botswana also? This is what makes me a dreamer. Because I believe that anything is possible as long as you can set your heart and your mind to it. Now, energy self-sufficiency, which I shared with you earlier, is key to socioeconomic growth. So we need to ramp that up. And I'll show you what I mean by that as Buang. Now, there's also need for us to think outside the box. There's also need for us to change our mindsets and start thinking about non-traditional products to drive the national transformation agenda. And Buang should also be in the forefront of that mindset change in our agriculture and natural resources space. But most importantly, most importantly, skills development in the agriculture and natural resources sector is paramount. It's paramount. We need to get more Botswana involved in this sector. So what are we doing now as Buang? This is where the crux of the matter is. So I'm going to share with you a snapshot of what we are doing as a university. First of all, research. Well, we are currently implementing research projects worth just over fifty-five million pula as a university over several strategic areas. And these include cereals and crop development, livestock development, renewable natural resources, particularly in biodiversity conservation, non-renewable natural resources, energy, water, land. This is where our key focus areas are now in terms of our research. But of course, apart from research, we are also a teaching and learning institution. And we offer different courses which also touch on these areas. We have basic diploma programs, bachelor's degree, graduate programs, which cover the whole broad spectrum of key areas in the agriculture and natural resources sector. But then, over and above that, we are now expanding our programs to respond to current needs in the agriculture and natural resources space. For instance, we are now developing five bachelor's degree programs. And amongst those, we are working on a pre-vet program with partners in the region, which includes the University of Namibia, University of Zambia, University of Zimbabwe. We are developing eight MPhil programs, eleven Master of Science programs, and nine PhD programs to respond to this skills gap that exists in the agriculture and natural resources space. But over and above that, because the other key question is, how do we make sure that more Botswana get involved in this sector? We are, as Prof Madibela indicated, we are developing vocational programs. And these vocational programs are underpinned by the observation that we have made as a university, that on an annual basis, twenty-five thousand of our youth do not progress to tertiary institutions. What happens to those youth? Over and above that, some of those who make it to tertiary institutions and they graduate with bachelor's degrees, they end up working as cashiers and security guards. So apart from this out-of-school youth that we are targeting with this vocational program, we also want to retool and upskill these other youths so that they contribute to nation building. And therefore, we are developing a twelve-month vocational program based on the Open Distance Learning Platform, which will train out-of-school youth along the entire value chain of the agriculture and natural resources sectors. These will be production-oriented programs. And just to give an example of some of these programs which we are developing is apiculture, is aquaculture, is small stock production, horticulture, small game ranching, amongst others. So we are very progressive. And as I said, we might be a young university, but we are punching above our weight class. We are very ambitious, we are very progressive, and we want to have an impact in the agriculture and natural resources space. Now, apart from this vocational program, we also have a program that we call the INQ Hive. Now, with this INQ Hive program, this is a three-year program that we give to our graduates here at Buang, our bachelors, our undergraduate graduates from Buang. Now, with this program, we take the Buang graduates through the entire life cycle of a business in collaboration with LIA for three years. So they learn everything from A to Z of agri-business skills. And during the time of their training, they get an allowance. And at the end of the program, we give them a little bit of money to start them on their chosen business. But of course, the number of graduates that we can take into this program is limited because of lack of funding. And this is where, again, partners are crucial to work with us as Buang so that we can expand this program, so that through this program, we can have an impact in the agriculture and natural resources spaces. Another program that we are developing, this one is not yet launched, is what we call the Sichaba Program. Now, with this Sichaba Program, we are also going to target out-of-school youth. But this one, it is not a certificate vocational program per se, but these are now based on startups. And we are working with the Minister of Youth in their farm in Muhobani. We've also made contacts with another Maokodi. Maokodi, thank you very much. We've made contacts with another youth group in Muyabana, where, again, we want to give this out-of-school youth an opportunity to be productive in our economy. And our model is we want to use our graduates from the INQ Hive program to mentor these Sichaba program youth. Now, moving on to technological innovations, I'll just share two with you. We have the Agri-Voltake Plant. I think this one, almost everybody knows about it. It's right in front of the university. What we are doing with this plant is we are producing energy and food on the same piece of land. This electricity that we are getting during the day here at Buang is coming from that plant. For me, this is technology and innovation in or on steroids, for lack of a better term. But at the same time, at the same time, to expand that value chain, we are also setting up a solar training center here at Buang so that we can develop technical skills in this area. So this is part of the electricity generation that I made reference to earlier in the situational analysis. So you see how these are now tying together? I know I'm taking too long, I'm talking too much, but it's important for you to understand this. The other technological innovation that we are working on as a university is the water purification plant, which the Master of Ceremony made reference to earlier, where we are essentially purifying sewage water to make it potable. And then we use that in food production, in agriculture. And we are powering the systems that we use to clean the water through solar energy. So for me, this is technology and innovation on steroids. Now, what is the future? Well, the future that we are creating here at Buang is hinged on centers of excellence that we are developing with research chairs to drive strategic areas of research. Look, futures thinking is all about defining what kind of future you want, right? And then you plant that seed today so that you can create the future that you want. And in our case, the future that we want is based on Vision 2036 and beyond, right? So, number one, one center that we are developing is the Center for Bioeconomy. Now, think about this. The global value of the bioeconomy is approximately four trillion US dollars. And this is expected to grow up to thirty trillion US dollars. Therefore, we see this as a key strategic area. And it underpins the green economy that I quoted earlier, right? It is the future, and Buang wants a part of that future. The specific areas of research that we are going to be involved in in that research center include livestock genetics and breeding. We've already started collaborations in this area already. Very soon, we have a team that is about to visit one of our collaborators in the U.S. at AgriLife in this endeavor. We are also looking at new crops, for instance, and this is already under implementation. I'll share with you which new crops are those. Some of the research areas under bioeconomy include cereals and legumes. They include automation, agro-processing, the list goes on and on. But what I am trying to do here is to show you that Buang has a vision for the future. And that vision is responding to the situational analysis that I shared with you in the beginning. The other center is Sustainable Resources and Sustainability. This is envisaged to be the Center for Sustainability here at Buang, where we want to implement achievement of the U.N.'s SDGs. And so, areas of research here will include water management, for instance, soil fertility, renewable energy, to name but a few. Then, we also have planned for a center of tourism and hospitality studies, veterinary medicine, what I call the Mid Research Institute. This is going to be a transformation of what is currently existing in our campus in Lobasi meeting. And then the CICE, which we now want to transform into a center for continuous learning. Then, the non-traditional crops. Thinking outside the box, mindset change. There is one crop which has taken Botswana by storm, safflower. I believe most of you have heard of safflower. This is technology and innovation on steroids. With this crop, over one thousand six hundred people have already been trained in safflower, in the safflower project. This includes master students, PhD students, policymakers, you name it. This is also contributing to the skills gap that I identified earlier in this sector, agriculture and natural resources. Another crop that we are working on is rice. In fact, rice and safflower are now part of the demolitological program, for those of you who might not be aware. And this And this has been driven by research that is generated here at Buang. I want to make this very, very clear. We might be a young university, but we are punching above our weight class. Now, let me go back to these textiles and footwear, just for a moment. Because whenever I talk about this to my colleagues in the university, they always look at me as if I'm a little bit crazy. When I say fashion and design, it's part of agriculture and natural resources. It's intrinsic to agriculture and natural resources. When you think your hundred percent woolen suit, that wool came from a mariner ship. That's agriculture. When you think of a hundred percent silk blouse that you are wearing, do you know where that silk came from? From mulberry trees? From silkworms? That's agriculture and natural resources. When you think of the T-shirt that you are wearing, hundred percent cotton, that is agriculture and natural resources. Therefore, I'm a dreamer because I believe that if we think outside the box as a university, these things are possible. And if these things are possible, that is going to reduce our import bill at the end of the day. But the bottom line is, Buang cannot do this alone. We can't. We need partners. We need collaborators. And it doesn't help very much if, for instance, donor A helps a community in village A with a small goat project, and you leave Buang out. Another donor does something else for another community somewhere else, and you leave Buang out. You know what the challenge is with that? Here at Buang, we have expertise in capacity building. And with capacity building, any intervention in this space of agriculture and natural resources is sustainable, is sustained. Therefore, we need to pull our resources together because we are working for a common goal. And that common goal is to assist Botswana reach 2036 and beyond, so that each and every Botswana can have an opportunity to aspire for prosperity for all, isn't it? Now, Vision 2036, I'm finishing. The thing is, once I start talking about Buang, I don't stop. So you have to stop me. Otherwise, I don't stop. I get possessed. But now, to sum up, if you look at Vision 2036 and its four pillars, sustainable economic development, human and social development, sustainable environment, governance, peace and security. Buang is actively implementing these. The initiatives that we are currently involved in are actively implementing these pillars. Sustainable economic development, for instance, the School of Tourism and Hospitality Studies will facilitate the achievement of this pillar. The Center for Bioeconomy, the INQ Hive Program, and new crops like safflower, they contribute to this pillar. The Sichaba Program, the Vocational Program, the Center for In-Service and Continued Education, which is where we are now, the MITI campus in Lobasi, these contribute to the human and social development pillar. Sustainable environment, well, all activities really that are being undertaken in the Faculty of Natural Resources are actively contributing to the achievement of this particular pillar. Especially when you take even innovations like the water purification plant and the Agri-Voltake Plant. These are key interventions in this area. And so, on our own, on our own, Buang can indeed move the needle. We can, and we are doing that. But that can move faster if we join hands with all stakeholders to move Botswana forward. That's what we need to do. And I want to put it to you that with this lecture, Buang, given all the support that we need by all actors in this space, we can play a pivotal role in helping Botswana to optimize the utility of the agriculture and natural resources sectors. The bottom line is, the path to Vision 2036 passes through agriculture and natural resources. It passes through Buang. Master of Ceremony, I've reached the end of my lecture. Thank you, thank you very much.
Thank you. Is that the standing ovation waiting to happen there for the Vice Chancellor of Buang, Professor Mosse Pele? Well done. I saw a lot of people taking notes. He took us back to the lecture room in a suit that looked amazing. You looked good while doing it. You should do it more often. I noticed there that you wanted to borrow some of the statistics. I went back to that survey, a CIPA, done by Deepa, 2019, where agriculture got 2%. I know the copyright industry's got 5.46% and some of the artists were looking at agriculture in a certain way. I could tell what you were doing there now, claiming some of those stats. Maybe we need to redo that survey and ensure that some of the suits we wear, the clothing, the cotton, must be attributed to agriculture to increase that percentage. Maybe we must recalculate. Topic for another day. Well said there, Professor. You touched on many, many great initiatives and strides that Buang has gone through. You reminded me that it was BCA, Botswana College of Agriculture, before it was Buang. You know, you also touched on how universities are the new explorers and how out-of-school youth can actually now go back to school and get productive through the Sichaba Program you mentioned. And all the wonderful strides, you know, punching above your weight, technology and innovation on steroids. That's truly amazing what you're doing with solar technology, with sunflower, safflower. Oh, thank you for that correction. Truly amazing what you're doing. And you obviously linked it with some of the other programs that exist within government, both Demolitoto or Touritoto. And we see all the other programs that are happening. Without wasting any more time, I'd like us to go for a break before the panel discussion. There are two serving points. Those that were in the VIP holding room, please leave the hall this way. You will be ushered to the serving point in the holding room. And then everybody else will use this exit to go to the second serving point. Let me just check the time. We can allocate 20 minutes if we can all be back here at 11:00 AM to continue with the program. You may leave the hall and be back here at 11 for that panel discussion. That's why these seats are here. You've been a wonderful audience here, the students outside, the viewers online. This is the Second Annual Vision 2036 Public Lecture and Roundtable Panel Discussion from Buang in Chaboroni. We're going for a break back at 11:00. Thank you.